All opposed? Then we have the work session minutes for November the 25th.
I make a motion that the work session for November 25th be approved as written.
Motion made by Councilman Dobbin, seconded by Councilman Brown to approve these minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then we have the regular council meetings for December the 16th.
Make a motion we approve.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Dobbin.
Mayor, could we have discussion?
Oh, okay, you wanna?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to at this time withdraw my approval, my, uh, my motion. I'd like to make a motion that we table the approval of the December 16, 2024, regular town council meeting, uh, meeting minutes until they, until we meet again and they accurately reflect what was said. Uh, under regular business, Mayor Byrd, there were, you discussed two items. The first item ends with, uh, ordinance in regards to a burn ban in town. From that point on, at the three minute and four second mark on the recording for the next minute and 11 seconds, you also made discussion regarding moratorium and it is not reflected in here. And I would like a detailed reflection of that to be in here before we approve these minutes.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Fair enough. Does anybody have any?
So I've made a motion now that we table those minutes, okay?
Okay. So. Now we have a motion before us to table the minutes of the December 16th regular council meeting until they are corrected. Motion made by Councilman Dobbin, seconded by Councilman Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The public hearing that was supposed to be on the agenda for tonight, uh, we need to have a motion to continue this until our February the 17th meeting because of notice requirements, because we had to cancel our meeting last week. Notices had to be redone and did not have time to do those. So we need to make a motion to continue this public hearing, I mean, special use permit, public hearing.
I make a motion that we, uh, we, um, I'm sorry, we're going to postpone the, uh, the hearing.
Continue.
To continue the public hearing for special, special use permit, uh, zero one, uh, dash zero one, dash two zero two four. Until the regularly scheduled meeting on February 17th, 2025 at 6:30.
Okay. Motion made? Motion made by Councilman. Motion made by Councilman McGowan and seconded by Councilman Dobbin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You startled me, Patrick. Okay. The next item on the agenda is open forum. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to council, address anything, please come forward, state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes. No one coming forward, I counsel the open forum at 6:38. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of our audit for 2023, 2024, and you have the information in front of you. Mr. Sharp. We're going to turn the floor over to you.
Good evening, uh, thanks for having me out tonight. Uh, familiar faces, uh, so my name is Jay Sharp. I am the audit partner in charge of the town's audit for 2024. So I'm here to present that. Uh, you should have the presentation in front of you. Um, I'll go through this and I'll be glad to take any questions you may have. Where you feel free to interrupt me during the presentation. Uh, so I want to first start out with the status of the audit. Uh, fill work was completed, uh, back in the fall. Uh, the financial statements were prepared and the audit was submitted to the local government commission and was approved for issuance with no changes from the local government commission. It was filed on time and met their deadline and so the audit is complete for 2024. Uh, I always want to talk a little bit about our roles and objectives as auditors. Uh, you know, we don't just come in and start just crunching the numbers. Uh, there's really three phases of an audit. Um, and the first phase is really the most critical phase, that's the planning phase. Uh, so where we plan out the audit, kind of gives us a roadmap on how we're going to conduct the audit on an annual basis. Uh, much of that involves internal controls, uh, getting an u- update of understanding of internal controls. Uh, and we may test controls from time to time. Uh, for 2024, we tested controls over three areas, uh, cash disbursements, payroll and credit cards. And from our understanding of internal controls and the results of our tests of controls, we perform what you call a risk-based audit approach. Uh, as we've done in the past, we're assessing risk to all the significant financial reporting areas the town has. Uh, for example, cash, revenues, expenditures. Uh, we're going to concentrate our audit efforts on the higher risk area. Uh, but we are going to look at every significant financial reporting area the town does have. Like I said, that kind of gives us a roadmap on how we're going to conduct the audit. And we do that because as auditors, we have to perform audit procedures to obtain what we consider to be sufficient audit evidence to render an opinion on the financial statements. That's why you hire us is to give an opinion. Uh, that opinion concentrates on whether the financial statements are materially correct or not. So just a little background on what we're doing. So the results of the 2024 audit, I think you'll be happy with these. Um, as I mentioned, it was filed in, in by the LGC's deadline. So scope and timing of the audit, we're on track, no issues there. Uh, the opinion I was just talking about, uh, once again, the town received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean audit opinion, uh, the best opinion you, you can receive. So good news there for the town. Uh, if during i- our audit, we know any issues, uh, we will, we will report those as findings on the financial statements. I'm happy to report there were no findings in 2024. Uh, there was one last year in 2023 that was corrected during 2024. Um, and there were just several routine audit adjustments, nothing unusual. Uh, but kind of summarized, clean audit opinion, no findings for 2024. Uh, in addition to the audit, we always issue a separate letter, um, call this a communications letter. Uh, it communicates to those charging governance or the board, uh, four main talking points here. Uh, the first one, if there's any significant policy changes that affect your notes to the financial statements, we're required to let you know about those. Uh, there were none for 2024. Uh, one of the areas we paid close attention to during the audit are any numbers derived from estimates. Uh, the town has two key estimates. Uh, the depreciable lives of its capital assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. Both those appeared reasonable, no issues there. Um, also happy to report no disagreements with management and no difficulties encountered during the audit process. Uh, Sherry and all the staff at the town gave us complete cooperation during the audit process and allowed us to complete the audit by the deadline. And we appreciate that cooperation. Now, the last part of my presentation is going through the numbers. So I got a few trend analysis here to show you kind of how the town's been performing financially throughout the years. Uh, the first one is a graph showing the revenues and expenditures from the general fund. Uh, and this goes back to 2018 through 2024. Uh, red hair represents revenues, blue represents expenditures. But you can see the growth of the town, uh, going back to 2018 where, you know, you had about $1.3 million in both revenues and expenditures. Uh, for 2024, uh, your revenues almost hit the $2.5 million mark. Um, expenditures were about $2.9 million, um, thanks to some capital outlay. But you can see the growth of the town's financials throughout the years here. Yes, sir. You can go ahead and ask now. No, because this is main operations. Actually, if you, I, I, you'll see in the next slide. This is the fund balance, so this is your equity, uh, throughout the years also. You're comparing your assets to liabilities. Um, and going back to 2017, you can see your, your fund balance was almost $1.1 million. At the end of 2024, it was $1.6 million. So you had a growth of, uh, fund balance, uh, of about $500,000 throughout the year. Um, but you can see, uh, going back to your question, um, you've had some capital outlay expenditures, especially in 2023, uh, building and stuff that you purchased. Um, what this graph does not encompass is any other financing sources. Uh, for example, so if you spend money on capital outlay, but you take a loan out, which are considered proceeds from loans, that's not in this summary. And so as you can see from your fund balance, your fund balance actually went up. You actually had a profit in 2024. Uh, your fund balance back in 2023 was about 1.25 million dollars. At the end of 2024, 1.6. So you saw about $350,000 growth in fund balance. And so like I said, this is operations, does not include other financing sources such as loans and things like that. So, uh, really no issues, no concerns from our part, but that was a great question yesterday. And, and moving on to the fund balance, the pie chart. Um, this is an important graph here because this really, what, what makes up your fund balance is important because that determines what the town can spend and what it can't. Um, and there is four sections here. Uh, the most important one is that green piece of the pie. That is your unassigned fund balance and available to be spent by the town. Now, one of the things we always calculate for the financial health of a town is look at your unassigned fund balance compared to your prior year expenditures. Um, and we, we get that ratio. For 2024, that was 45%. Generally, anything above eight to 10% is considered somewhat healthy. Anywhere in the 20 to 30% range is really healthy. You're at 45%. Yeah. Uh, no, there's no actual LGC requirement, that's just kind of a number they use for their calculations. Um, like they may put towns on financial warning i- if there's below 8%, but there's not an actual general statute.
I just want to make sure the same percentage we're talking about.
Yes, but that, that's one they go by, but there's not an actual general statute that's required.
Thank you, sir, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, you're fine. Um, so yes, at 45%, so an outstanding number, that did grow from last year. Um, the blue piece here is restricted by state statute. That's basically money that's due to town that you can't spend, obviously money you haven't received yet. Uh, so once you do receive that in the year we're in right now, you'll be able to spend that. And then red is other restrictions such as power fund for streets and things like that. Um, but like I said, the green part is the important one, 45%. So that's an outstanding unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. I'm not going to be reiterated on the next slide, cash reserves. Looking at your unrestricted cash and comparing to your expenditures. Basically calculating how mu- how long you could continue operating if you're receiving more cash inflows. Uh, this number went up too. Um, there was 101 days in 2023, it jumped to 170 days for 2024. Uh, we generally recommend three to six months in cash reserves and of course you're almost at half a year. Um, so once again, another outstanding number trending in the right direction for the town. Next couple of slides, we kind of look at property tax and property tax rates and kind of see the growth of your property tax revenues over the years. Um, for 2024, your property tax revenues were 1.4, almost 1 point, between 1.4 and 1.5 million dollars. Uh, you've seen growth in those revenues each the last several years. Uh, back in 2018, uh, your property tax revenues were about $683,000. So revenues from property taxes have doubled, over doubled, uh, since 2018. And you've seen continued growth, uh, in those revenues. And, and looking on the next slide, property tax rates. So your rates haven't gone up, but your revenues have gone, uh, uh, according to property tax revenues. So you have an increase in rates, but obviously assessments and the growth in Johnston County around, around the town's area as increase your revenues from property taxes. And the final thing about the general fund is the expenditure breakdown, um, how you spent your money in 2024. Several categories, uh, same categories as previous years. Um, the biggest one continues to be public safety. Uh, 44% of your total expenditures went toward public safety and that's green there. Uh, second, you know, general government was 13%. Um, tied there with, uh, administrative services. Uh, 11% was debt service, um, and a few other small categories. But, well, once again, public safety is your number one expenditure category. 44% of your total expenditures went toward public safety for 2024. And I'll end my presentation talking about the water and sewer fund. Um, this is a little bit obviously smaller than your governmental. But looking at your revenues and expenditures for this, um, you've been very consistent over the last three years. Uh, for 2024, your revenues were about $183,000. Your expenses were about $165,000. Uh, you've shown a profit, this is a business type fund. Um, so you'd like to see a profit obviously in it and you've shown a profit the last three years in your water and sewer fund. And looking at the, uh, cash reserve for your water and sewer fund, uh, this is even better in your general government fund. Um, for the end of 2024, you're at 543 days in cash reserves and so well over a year in cash reserves. Of course, this fund's not as large as your general government, um, but safe to say, uh, financially healthy for the town, uh, for both your governmental and water and sewer funds. Um, no indications of any issues, um, trending in the right direction. And you have a nice, uh, unassigned fund balance and nice cash reserves in place at the end of 2024. Uh, with that, I'll be glad to take any additional questions you may have on the audit procedures. Uh, the results of the audit or the numbers themselves for 2024.
I want to thank you for the report. Personally, I think it's very easy to read and very easy for us to understand since we don't work with this every day. And on that note, I'm going to switch away from you and say that, uh, all of us, the administration and, and the council have a lot to do with, with coming out and looking that good. But I've got to give special, um, accolades, if you will, to Ms. Sherry and Leanna for keeping the lids down and the money going in the right place at the right time. So making us look good, thank you, both of you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have a question for Mr. Sharp? Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Glad we got a clear eye. It does indicate the hard work that our staff puts in. Uh, the next thing is my report and I haven't been to as many meetings as I did generally do, but I did attend the, um, Triangle Chamber meeting this week and I hosted the Governor's Association, I mean, the Mayor's Association meeting this month. Boy, I'm way up yonder. I'm not feeling good tonight, can y'all tell? But, uh, I did, uh, host that this month and we had a, uh, very good meeting. Representative Strickland and Senator Sari was at our meeting and gave us some insights on things that we need to do to help get some funding back to the town. And Leanna and I will begin working on that to get that information to them. Would like to give you an update on the things that they told us about, uh, Western North Carolina. There is still a lot of the funds that our governor and legislators are looking at to send to Western North Carolina because there are still so many people that are living in tents. And so they are trying to, uh, see how they can get the resources to them, but also not forget that we still have needs. Even though Western North Carolina was devastated, uh, people in Johnston County still have needs too. So we're just hoping that we can get some funds this year. So that's that part, okay? We have in our packet a proclamation for, um, declaring February as All In Red Month. And, um, this is important, uh, to remember that, um, the Heart Association is, is trying to make it, uh, people aware of heart disease and how easy it is to, for it to affect you, even though sometimes you don't know it. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Proclamation declaring February 2025 as All In Red Month in the town of Wilson Mills. Whereas the well-being of our community is of paramount importance and maintaining excellent health among our citizens requires a top priority. And whereas February marks the month-long countywide heart health awareness campaign entitled All In Red organized by UNC Health Johnston and the Johnston Health Foundation. And whereas in the United States, North Carolina and Johnston County, heart disease is a leading cause of death among both men and women. And whereas according to the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention CDC, up to 80% of premature deaths from heart disease and stroke could be prevented through increased physical activity, improved diet, education and proper maintain- maintenance of medical conditions such as high blood pressure, high cholesterol and diabetes. And whereas All In Red provides an opportunity to raise awareness about heart health while addressing the growth needs of local cardiology, cardiology patients. And whereas the All In Red campaign encourages all Johnston County residents, business owners and visitors to participate by wearing red on February the 7th, 2025. National Wear Red Day and/or host a red-themed promotion or fundraiser throughout February. And whereas recognizing the financial challenges faced by heart patients, all fundraised during this campaign will benefit local heart patients through the Johnston Health Hearts Found- Foundation's Heart Fund. And whereas we honor heart disease and stroke survivors, those currently battling these conditions and their families who provide unwavering love and encouragement while also applauding the dedication of our medical professions who deliver quality care. Now therefore, the Honorable Flitter Byrd in the town of Wilts Mills do hereby proclaim February 25th as All In Red Month and encourage businesses, industries and citizens in our community to support and participate in this impactful initiative. Duly proclaim this 21st day of January 2025 and it's, it's 28th day. 29th day of 2025. Okay, Leanna.
Um, the first item on the agenda is the chamber, council chamber upfit bid review and when this packet came out, we had preliminary bid review because we thought the meeting was going to be on the 23rd. And we were going to have to re- have to schedule a special meeting to review the final bid tabulation and award this bid. So, um, you can award the bid this evening if you'd like. You've got the bid tab in front of you and Paul Fox is here from 310. I'm sorry, that's not your name anymore, Studio 310, sorry. To review those that were received and answer any questions that you might have.
Now, Paul, you did, y'all did best days for us, you did call them and?
We, we did, and again, my name's Paul Fox from Studio 310. We changed our name at the beginning of January, so apologize for that, thanks. You'll, you'll, it's still, the word 310 is still there, so that's good.
Okay.
Like that wasn't your name anymore.
It's still my name. But no, thank you, uh, ma- uh, anyway, uh, Paul Fox, Studio 310, Ma- uh, Mayor Byrd, thank you for having me here tonight and council, appreciate it. Um, and yes, to answer your question, we have vetted these, um, these all, and all of these bids. And just to, just to let, just to go back, uh, I think we all know that we submitted publicly the bid documents in December. Uh, we had a lot of interest and we also had, um, we had, um, in our, in our, we, at the bid receipt date, we actually received seven bids, um, which was actually very good, that was, that, that shows a lot of interest. We had a few questions and, um, through, throughout the bid process, it was a very, a very public process, you know, we advertised. Uh, and we have, the results of that are your bid tab that you have here today. Hope you all can hear me, I'm not, I'm loud enough. Um, I, and looking at the bids, I will say that we, um, we have gone through a kind of exhaustive, um, review of these to confirm numbers. We've also, um, one of the things we did is, you know, out of the seven, seven bids we have, there were obviously some high numbers and low numbers. And in reviewing that, the town, Leanna asked us to review those and we chose the, the bottom four bid numbers from a cost perspective. And we did, um, a little bit more due diligence with those. We actually, um, we actually did go through and we, we, we took the certified bid tab, we reviewed those numbers. We looked at them in several different ways. We actually, um, viewed, reviewed numbers, we called references. Um, we just basically qualified each of those bids of, of those bottom four. The result of that is one of those bidders, the very low bid on the bottom four, we discovered was non-qualified. Um, that group was, and, and, you know, not, um, they were non-qualified because we asked them, you, when, when typically in, even in state construction, when your costs, when you have a swing of 10% or more, there's something wrong with that number. So we went back and we asked questions to that, to that group and they did verify they missed some things. Um, and so at this point, they were, uh, uh, basically over 30% low. Um, and so they didn't, they did miss that, they offered to increase their number based on what they missed, but that's not fair and that's not in, that's not honorable in the, in the bidding process. Um, I can share more of that, more of that information with you. Um, but, but I will say, um,
Talking about, uh, the Carolina construction.
Correct, correct.
They are not qualified, so.
According to our information, we can, we can, I can go into more detail about that if you'd like.
Right now, it's.
Um, and looking at the other, other information for the other bidders, um, we do, we, we did qualify those and we, and I will say all of the, all, including Carolina construction, all of those bidders were qualified from a, from, from a general construction standpoint. The problem we had with the one, it was just their pricing wasn't, wasn't perfect. But they were all qualified, they had terrific references relative to schedule, performance, um, change orders, you know, coordination with design team, um, very good recommendations from every one of those teams. It is, in our opinion, that we looked, we actually, that you all look at the low bid tonight, which the next low bid would be Calvin Davenport. Um, who is that next low number, I would say. That was, that would be our recommendation that you all would accept that low bid.
Does anyone have? Does?
In case it, in case a question arises, it is, uh, contrary to law, uh, to, for the, a low bidder if, or a bidder of any type, if they realize they've made mistakes in their bid to correct it after bids have been opened, so we, the town would not be able to take them up on that offer.
Did, and you, um, repeat that, it's, it would not be allowed?
Would not, it was, it's, it's, um, the statute prohibits a bidder from correcting their bid after bid opening if it was a mistake.
Agreed, that's, that's, and that's perfect, that's why we also, we, we tried to cover our bases on that to disqualify them in a couple of, uh, but the, the, the 10% and also, yes, they, it wa- it was very polite of them to offer to increase their number.
Does, does anyone have any question about? Okay.
Should I hold questions till the end? It's about one specific bid or one question, okay? If I can go ahead and do it then, uh, in, in fact, it is Carolina, Carolina Davenport. I noticed on the, uh, on the, uh, the legend.
Is it Calvin Davenport?
I'm sorry, Calvin, yeah, Calvin Davenport, the first one. I, I took notice that under the, uh, legend, identification of hub certified slash minority business, they have a checkmark and an A and a B, everybody else has a checkmark with an A. What is the difference with that A and B?
Uh, there are two different forms that you're allowed to, to complete and you could do either one, they actually did both.
Okay, that's all it is.
It's perfectly reasonable.
The next question, under, and, and I need you to just give us kind of a synopsis on this because I don't understand what it is. Going down further on the legend side where it says base bid, you've got alternate A1 all the way through alternate P as in Paul 1. What, those are obviously deductions, but can you generally, can you generalize what they were?
Absolutely, yes, okay, of course, the base bid is the base number. And then what we did, because, because the town added several things to the scope and we also wanted to identify the costs of, um, of the canopies, you know, the canopy structures, south and the east, east locations, site work, um, just to be able to understand, you know, if there was a, if we had a budget issue, can we take something away or did it allow us to add it? So most of the information here represents deducts and there are a few adds. For example, the, the canopy, we separated the, um, the, like the east canopy into architecture and structural. For example, the, the canopy, we separated the, um, the, like the east canopy into architecture and structural and site. So in, in different, we, you know, there's different numbers for each of those. It was really for us to dig down just to honestly, to be able to compare pricing. So each of those represents not like the first one, I'll explain like A one. And I'll just go down the list. Is it okay if I go down the list for you?
I don't need you to do that. Just a synopsis of it. Just tell us generally what these, you told us pretty much what they are. There, there are add-ons and deductions for canopies and sidewalks, I'm sure, and things like that.
That's right.
That's what I, that's all I really get to know. Thank you.
Um, other than the one that, that has been excluded, um, what's the locations on, on these companies? Um, and, and it, Calvin Davenport, is that a construction company? Is that a, a person?
Good question about Calvin Davenport. That's the name of the company. Um, and actually, um, the person who owns it is Richard Davenport and they are a Rocky Mount firm.
Okay.
Um, and so there, I would consider those folks local. Um, so. And, and there, the other ones obviously are Raleigh and, um, right here in Johnston County as well.
Okay, Riley Contracting, where are they at?
Out of Raleigh. No, actually Riley's in Cary. Oh, sorry.
G C three.
Harrod is out of Raleigh.
I mean Progressive, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, Progressive Contracting is out of the Raleigh area too. That, and, and just, and to help you, these, all of these groups are, we consider local. But, 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 well, I'm sorry, Johnston County, but, but yeah, one of those is from Johnston County, so.
All right, um, Harrod and Associates.
Raleigh.
Uh, Salisbury.
Salisbury Moore, I am. They are, I believe they are also in the Raleigh, Cary Durham area. I apologize. I don't remember where they're from.
And Vortex, Vortex is here in this county. So i- if, if I understand, if I'm looking at the base bid, so these things that are deducted, where it says deduct add, I'm, I'm, I'm not real sure that, that, that we're, we're, we're a hundred percent clear on, on, on what, like, uh, for, for example, um, we'll just use Calvin Davenport. Two million sixty-four thousand. Now, we're, uh, we're alternate A one, we're al- already deducting two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then we, we get down to the bottom down here and it's, it's, it's more on the alternance than it is on the base bid.
How's your addition?
Well, I will, I explained that the philosophy is that to deep, we actually had deep, it is their, sometimes a general rule that you get better numbers when you do, uh, deducts on bidding, on bid day. So we use, we use deducts kind of on purpose so that when sometimes adds cost more. Um, and everyone has a different philosophy on that. That's our, that's our opinion. But all of those, the noes, and then we've actually, you, I think you have, I don't know if you have that form with the noes in it. Yes, you have that one. That was our suggestion of where we thought, we basically, we, we did not deduct anything. And I think we accepted the ads on this. So that's a total. So we added money to the, to the quote, the, the, like there's signage that's in that, that's, that are ads. That's why this number at the bo- at the bottom is higher.
Dressing the yes, no thing here.
Yeah, that's what he's saying. Um, like here.
Can you, can you, uh, elaborate just a little bit more on the, uh, calculation option with the yes, noes? I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um.
I, I, I need bidding one-on-one here.
It's okay. And you know, it's, it's, it's a great little spreadsheet, by the way. We created it just for you guys. But, but basically you got a base bid and then, for example, you, you, any of the deducts, you know, we've just said no to all those deducts because we want to keep those in the project. If we had said yes, it would have removed those from the project and we would save, for example, the first one, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
You, use the example of the canopy. So say that's it.
Okay.
So you're saying.
That's one of, one of the canopies, which is A one is the canopy on the east end of the building, which is kind of what you all call your front door.
Okay. And you, according to this, you would not allow that deduction.
We, well, that's my opinion, but, but we, we would like you to keep that in your scope, but that's two worth two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars if you wanted to reduce the scope.
Got you. Now I understand.
So let me, let me ask the question. Okay. So we take this first bid for Calvin Davenport, the one that is the next one in line, and we take this bid and he starts work and we decide that we don't want that canopy. Do we take that out then?
Actually, it's best to negotiate all of that upfront. You will pay more if you.
When he gets ready to start working, we'd say, we're going to award this to you. Then we start talking.
Correct. And my, and my suggestion is, uh, select your contractor that you like to work with and then negotiate the remaining with him. Like you, you all still have some time to decide what adds and deducts you would like to put in your project. You do not have to decide those tonight. Just your contractor selection, if you so choose to do so.
That's what I was thinking. That once we, we decide on who we want to do it, then we can sit down with him and decide what we want, how we want.
Correct. And, and we did do it. We did some experiments with this spreadsheet. And in most cases, the low bid still remain, it is always the low bid. Um, we, we kind of, we did, we with all.
You did some tweaking back.
Well, we just, you know, it's interesting. I, I was kind of wondering if someone else's deducts were a lot larger or smaller, how does, does it affect the, and it really doesn't, which I was surprised, but it really is true to the, to the base bid and to the add deduct numbers too.
Okay. So what we need, do y'all have any more questions? What we need to do is decide if we want to accept one of these bids or talk about it some more.
So I just want to clarify, what they're doing tonight is deciding who they want to negotiate with. They're not approving an actual total amount for one bidder, correct?
That. Correct. That, you can do that. Yeah. You don't have to accrue, you do not have to approve the amount because the adds and deducts are going to change the total. You just have to prove that the entity you'd like to partner with.
So we just make negotiations. We need to select the contractor that we need, we want to work with.
Um, and Mr. Fox, isn't, isn't this a contract, uh, construction in the formal bidding range that would require it to be awarded to the lowest responsive bidder?
Yes, unless through our analysis, we have found that the bidder is not qualified.
Right.
For other reasons, right?
And could, could counselor say that, that again, but a little bit louder? I didn't quite hear all.
Sure. Sorry. Too far away. Um, given that this is a construction contract in the formal bidding range, this, the applicable standard is that the contract, the award should go to the lowest responsive bidder. And, um, so I believe the lowest is being recommended for disqualification. I'd like Mr. Fox to explain, um, the, the issues that were noted in the bid. If they're immaterial, they can be waived, but it, it doesn't appear that they're immaterial. And so it is likely appropriate to disqualify him. That, that bidder, and I recommend that you do that as a preliminary step and then you move on to the award of the contract.
So you're recommending that we take this bidder out?
I am.
Okay.
I would ask Mr. Fox, just if you could, to first explain what, what emissions were in the bid, if you could recall.
I'll be happy to. And, and also we have, um, written documentation that we forwarded to, um, the town administrator, um, the general contractor. We did, and honestly, we had a really great conversation with references. Their, um, their bid, we did ask them to qualify it and they did look at their numbers. They, they omitted some of the steel in the canopies and made assumptions that, made other assumptions on how they could build it, which did not match the drawings. Um, of which it cannot be built the way it looks now if, if they were to build. So anyway, they, they did not, they did not price what was actually on the drawings. And they admitted to that.
And so that made their bid lower.
Correct. And a few other things too. They did not go into details. Uh, but, but to them, they, they were, well, I think two hundred, I mean, I think it was a, well, under the, the, the difference, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars lower than they wanted to be.
Okay, is that?
Thank you.
So now do we need to, to vote to disqualify them?
That would be my recommendation based on the evidence given by Mr. Fox that, that they be disqualified as a bidder.
I make a motion that we disqualify Carolina Construction from the bid.
Okay, motion made.
Carolina.
We need a, a sec. Okay, motion made by Councilman Trippett, seconded by Councilman Brown to disqualify Carolina Commercial as a bidder because of them not being qualified to bid.
Yeah.
Can I add, if we could add language about the general statute to that?
Okay, but because of general statutes. Okay, we'll put that.
Right. I don't have the precise statutory reference, but chapter one forty-three, one twenty-nine.
Okay. So we had the motion. Any more discussion of this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we need to cross them off of our bid sheet.
Mayor, before we, before we move on, can I, I, I'd like to throw something out here and I, I don't think we're putting the cart before the horse, but I'm, I'm wondering if we didn't look in all corners of the barn, if we overlooked something. And that's simply, you know, un- unlike some of you folks, I, I've never, never built anything before like this commercially, never had to bid on anything like this. So all of the information that we could possibly gather is what we need to, a- and, and do we have that now? So here's my question. I'll jump right to the, to the thing. Should we have not at some point in time, and if so, is it too late to bring the planning board in on this? Or is this something that planning board doesn't need to look at? But.
No, I don't think the planning board needs to look at this.
Well, maybe they don't, maybe they don't.
It's not zoning or it's not.
Okay.
It's not anything to do with, um, this, this is something that would be under the administrative part of the.
Okay, okay. I got you and I fully understand. I'm just saying it's, that's a group of another five or six people that some of them have a lot more experience than, for example, me and some of the others perhaps. So if it would not have been a good idea, I'm just throwing it out.
So do y'all want to? We need to take the next one with it.
Correct.
What? Yeah, we voted on that one. We voted on to take this one off. Okay. And now.
There was a motion this second.
Oh, I thought I called for the, okay, all in favor of taking off Carolina Commercial. All opposed? Okay.
Now, I, I have a question for, for counsel. Um, so we're obligated to take the lowest bid.
Uh, if you would like to proceed with the current bids that have been proposed, then you, you are required to accept the lowest responsive bidder. You can also reject all bids if that's an option and rebid it, but, but as presented, if you want to move forward with these bids, you would have to accept the lowest bid.
Okay.
Doesn't leave us a whole lot of leeway. We just need to move forward and.
Right. Because we, this has been looked at and, and, and three ten has, uh, they have sent out the bids, they gave the people the, the, all the information. Um, and the bids have come in and in my opinion, this is where we need to go because if we keep, keep and keep on, we're just going to not have a cha- council chamber. We're going to be in the same position we are now.
Mayor, I, I, I agree with you. We've got, we've got to move on. We can't delay this. That's going to mess up the whole time schedule we've got. But I, uh, in talking with, um, my partner here, uh, Councilman Brown, it, it puts us into a corner legally that we've just really got to go with the lowest bidder. We don't have a choice. Am I correct? As long as they've, as long as they've satisfied all of the demands and requirements that we've put, we have to go with the lowest bidder. So this is just a formality tonight.
That is a requirement of public bidding that you award contracts to the lowest responsive bidder unless you're doing a qualification based.
Okay. I get it. And that leads me to one other question, Mr. Fox. And that is, let's say we go with the lowest bidder and it's all signed, sealed, and delivered. Um, let's talk about, uh, termination clause. What's, what's, uh, typical, what's standard? And what happens if we, we, we progress one or two months into this and we go, you know, or Leanna tells us, you know, these guys are just not responsive at all and, and you, you agree, they're just horrible. What can we do? And, and what are the problems we're going to encounter if we bring in the second lowest bidder midstream?
Well, to your, your protections that are built into this, we, we have assigned and as part of the agreement, AIA contracts are part of this. They're very positively for, they're actually, they, they're very good for the owners. So we're using AI contracts and we are, we are part of that process. We're vetting them. They also have a, um, a bid bond. They've bid for this and they're insured for this amount. So there are, if, if there is an occurrence and say someone walks off the job, the insurance that is, that we have required from them, they can be backcharged with those policies and have to pay the difference to get another contractor back on board. So those are your, those are your protections.
So there's a case in Cumberland County now, Fayetteville Fire Station twenty-four. The contractor, they've been hit and missed for four and a half years now. So they have a fire station that they can't use because the contractor's work was shoddy and the bond on it is trying not to pay the town or the city. So they've been going back and forth legally for three years on this. So how, if we get in that case, how will that work?
Um, and I, and I, I cannot answer that one totally. However, I will say the bonding company is trying to get out of it somehow.
Company, they're all pointing fingers at everybody. That's a twenty, thirty million dollar bill. We're not dealing with that much money, but it's just important to us.
It's, it's very important to you all as well. Um, I will say that we as a design firm will do everything we can to manage our piece of it. And if there are any, any red flags that occur, we will try, we will, we will acknowledge that and bring it to your attention as soon as possible.
I was going to say, if, if something starts happening, the contractor's not doing what he wants to, we're wanting to do, I'm going to point my finger at you.
And you should.
Say you need to fix it.
You're guilty.
Because we, we are paying you to design it and we have paid you to do this. And if something goes wrong, I'm expecting you to fix it.
I will, and, and I will tell you, on the, on pre-bid walkthrough, um, Albert, you know, my partner, did explain to everyone, this is not our first rodeo.
Yes.
We're very familiar with, um, state construction and with these processes. There are, no one is perfect. Things do happen, but we will do our best of, of what we are available to do to, to protect you all and ourselves.
Mr. Fox, if you have had negative interactions with any of these particular bidders, are you required to tell us any of that or are you allowed to tell us, listen, I had a, this, this guy is pretty good, but this other guy is not so good, so.
I would, I would tell you, I would definitely tell you that of what I can publicly say. Uh, but yes.
All right.
And I will tell you, I have not had any negative interaction with anyone on this list. And, and I was actually pleasantly surprised of the references that I received. I didn't call just the references. I called around those references of other people that I knew and, and received good feedback.
Um, u- under, um, the G C one, Calvin Davenport, I, I did notice that, um, former, uh, performance bond, there's a no and a question mark beside that one. And the next line item, contractor's affidavit of payment, no and a question mark. What are the question marks about?
Yeah, those are what we do a lot of times and these is we, in, in our, um, specification package, which is about, you know, this thick or so, we have all of our specs and front end documents and all those forms are in that specification pack. This is the front end and we actually include all the documents that are, that are going to be required of them during construction. Some of these items are things they will prove, they will give to us, like payment, payment applications, lien waivers, all of those kinds of forms are just part of this. We kind of included on purpose. all of those kinds of forms are just part of this, we kind of include it on purpose, um, just to acknowledge those forms are there, but some of these things happen during construction.
Yeah, I just, I, I was just, just seeing, you know, that's the only one with the question mark beside, there's no other ones that have the question mark.
Agree, and also during the bid opening, I looked at some of these, and I'm like, this is sort of questionable, and I looked, and then I, they were fine, though. If I have a question, that's how I noted, question mark beside something, to let, I'm not quite sure I read. When you're opening bids, there, there are probably a thousand words on one page on insurance documents, I was just trying to make sure we were dotting, you know, dotting our, our i's and crossing t's and so forth, that's what those question marks are, I left them there on purpose, we should have taken them off, but they're, they're fine.
Any more questions?
What, yeah, I do, um, what's the, what's the most recent, uh, project that Calvin Davenport has, has, uh, completed?
They, um, I will tell you, they, um, had a really great conversation with, I'm gonna say their biggest client, who's the state of North Carolina, DOT. And, um, they do a lot of welcome centers, and they just finished one, um, recently, and they, and, and actually the, I think, yeah, they sent me a video of, of the location, the quality of constru-, and, and I will say, they've been working with DOT for over ten years. Um, they, believe it or not, they don't advertise, they're, all of their business is word of mouth, and they, they after go out, they go after a lot of work on, on, for the, for DOT, and they keep getting hired for those projects. Part of the reason their no, their bids are low, because those, that's a low bid, um, it's a bidding process as well, but they're doing very good work, so they're qualified to do that, um, so extremely good recommendation from DOT. And I have, just so that you, and, and I shared it with the town administrator, we have, I've documented the conversations, and some, some of that information, that you all are welcome to see that, um, and, and, and I would even say, as a council, if you all wanted to pick up the phone and call some of these folks, you can still do that yourself, too.
Any more questions? Do we want to award the bid?
I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll stand on the edge of the cliff, and I make a motion, we approve the Calvin Davenport base bid of two million sixty-four thousand for the, um, for the outfit of, um, the Chamber Upfit Project, Wilson's Mills Town Hall. What did I miss?
Attorney, do they need to specify an amount since we're going to be working on the add deducts?
Right, I think, I mean, we can mince words a little bit, but I think that the, the award is to the entity that had the low bid, and that's the base bid that's reflected, and then if you decide on any add, adds, adders, well, mainly just the deducts, then you can do that.
So we can, we.
Correct. All right, I make a motion that we approve the Calvin Davenport, uh, bid for the, uh, Wilson's Mills Town Hall Chamber Upfit Project.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Jernigan, all in favor?
I got, I got, I got a question.
Question?
About, about this, this motion. Okay, um, I, I'm, I'm going, I'm, I'm just gonna assume the, the two, two million sixty-four thousand. We, we know what number we've got to work with, with what we've already paid out, are we still within that, that number? Or was it three million?
Well, for this particular project, out of that three million, this is probably about a hundred thousand more with the base bid, but that's why we wanna work with them, with the adds and the deducts, and negotiate.
Right, so that's my question, so if we, I mean, i- if, if, if everything stays like it is right now, you're two million sixty-four thousand, what we've already spent is gonna put us over the, the, the three million that, that we, we, we had talked, we, we gotten in and talked about, so some of these is gonna have to be deducted. Some of this deduction's gonna have to happen. You know, my, 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 my concern is, is, you know, looking, looking at this, if I, if I go down every one of them, and we'll just start with Calvin, Calvin Davenport, uh, I think he said the owners were A-one, alternate A-one deduction, well, his is two hundred sixty-five thousand, but if you go to, um, uh, Progressive Contract, and his is two hundred nine thousand, um, you know, jump over to the last one, uh, two hundred thirty-five thousand. I, I, I'm, I, I mean, how do you know that, 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 that one of these, like, alternate two, his is twenty-two thousand, you go over to, uh, Progressive Contract, and this eleven-three, eleven thousand three hundred, so, I mean, it's all over the page. Um, you go over to, um, uh, Herod and Associates, it's fifty-two thousand deduction. Um, it, it just seems to me, it's just, it, it, it's all over the place, so I, I, I mean, it would seem to me that, that, that we, it needs to be made clear what, what we're going, what we're, we're gonna have to deduct, because we, we, we can't, we can't pay this and what we've already paid out, because we're over budget.
You can't do that until you pick the contractor, and then you sit down at the table with him, and that's when you start negotiating.
So, under state law, if the bids come in in excess of the project funds available for the project, you may negotiate with the lowest responsive bidder in order to, to get the amount within project funds. So we have a lowest responsive bidder, and then you negotiate with them in order to, to try to reach a, an acceptable number.
Okay, but we know we got, we, I mean, I just wanna make sure the coun- council understands that we're gonna have to deduct something. I mean, because, because th- these numbers are coming in, plus what we've already spent on this project, it, it was just, it's, it's more than, than what we had, had originally planned.
Okay, so we have a motion, any more comments? The motion is to accept the bid for Calvin Davenport, all those in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Paul. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, um, a budget amendment, Ms. Sherry, would you like to? Does any, has, has everybody had a chance to look at it and review it?
Anybody have any questions in reference to the budget amendment?
I do, one quick one on second page, uh, the right-hand column, I guess it's still a decrease column, correct? And it's a hundred thou-, or, I'm sorry, a thousand dollars, community policing program, so if we're deducting that, have we stopped the community policing?
No, that is, um, we usually use that fund for, or that line item for our Christmas family. However, we made a separate line item, since it's not in the actual police department, we made a separate line item in the, um, mhm, in the governing board.
Okay.
And so we didn't take anything away, we, we just put it elsewhere.
Where it should be.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what several of these are, is correcting, um, the line items and the, the, moving it from one part to another.
Right.
And this, this will clean up?
Yes, a lot of the deficits for the, um, for the first fiscal, I mean, for the first half of the fiscal year.
Yeah, right. So we're cleaning up from, uh, July to December.
Yes, ma'am.
The capital outlay for Town Hall, um, upfit, the one twenty-six, eight forty-five?
Yes.
Um, increase?
It increased because it was in a negative, and the master plan account repaid that back to the general fund.
Okay. If I've looked up top, one more line, I saw that.
Anyone have any more questions? Do I hear a motion to accept the budget amendment number two?
Thank you, council.
Motion was made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilman Trippett. All in favor? All opposed? The next item is discussion of the burn ban ordinance, um, Ms. Wendy.
At Councilman McGowan's request, um, I've gotten some information together with some options regarding a potential burn ban or changes to our burning ordinance, should I say, um, to limit or stop the amount of smoke generated with land clearing. The planning boards aware of the changes requested, they're currently working their way through the UDO to make any necessary changes. We actually discussed this at our work session on Monday night. Um, and below are the options the planning board is considering, we'll go over the options, and then I'll tell you which one they chose. Option one is a complete open burn ban for all open burning, residential and commercial, no one would be able to burn anything within the town corporate limits. And the implications of that is if we implement a total burn ban, we would have to offer our residents another option for disposal. And in order for us to do that, we would need the knuckle boom truck, we would need two employees with salaries and benefits to operate that truck, and then we would have to empty that truck at a hundred dollars per load and the diesel for the truck. Option two is requiring an air curtain or burn box for all open burning residential and commercial. Implications of that one is residents would not be able to afford the burn box for their personal use. Developers would need to install a burn box prior to burning any debris from the property they're clearing, regardless of the size of the lot.
You do?
Yes, sir.
In my opinion, after reading through this, and I read through it about four times, option two would require the same implicat- implications as option one, because it's, you're saying right here that the residents would not be able to afford a burn box, so we would have to come back in here and go back and, and do the knuckle boom truck, all that stuff. If you, if you, if you, if you're gonna say that you're gonna give burn, make burn boxes, and then residents are not gonna be able to afford that, then we need to come back and say, uh, we're gonna have to go back up to the implications on option one.
Right.
Because, uh, we're not gonna try to do something to force residents that they can't, they have to do, and then they can't afford to do it.
Right, well, we do have the two other options here.
But I'm just, I'm just making that statement.
You're, you're right, right. Um, the other options is the open burning for residents, for fallen leaves, limbs, branches, shrubbery, yard cleanup, just like they're doing now, that comes from their parcel, um, that could be left in place for our resident. And for developers, the air curtain could be mandated when clearing a parcel over a certain number of acres. It's been discussed with Mr. De Sablon, our town attorney, and he states he would like to do more research on this prior to it being mandating. Um, the wording on this change would need to be precise. I'm not gonna read that last paragraph, because the planning board met Monday night, and part of that meeting was a work session, and this is what we discussed at that work session. And the recommendation that they made was to continue to allow residents to burn their trash, their yard debris, and not bother the residents, and for developers with parcels five acres or more, requiring them to use a burn box slash air curtain in order to be able to burn it, or either they could chip it, or they could haul it off and dispose of it somewhere else. But that's the recommendation that would come before the council, once the UDO comes this, this far. I did speak. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, I, I was waiting, my turn.
Oh, okay, well, I did speak with Mr. De Sablon, um, about the burn box, because there had been some questions on that, and I've also spoken with our planning consultant, and he's gonna help us get the wording right to make sure we're not wording it in a way that we could be targeting anyone in particular.
And I was only gonna add, one of the difficulties that I would want to address, that I'm sure that the, the town's planning consultant is gonna be grappling with is, um, first, how would you define the developer precisely enough to make sure that you're including those you want to include, and, um, not excluding by accident those you want to be included? Or, um, and, but, and, and also the disparate, disparate treatment between residences and residential customers and developers. The one thought that just occurred to me, if, if it's going to be a five-acre floor of area being, you know, burnt, the, the, the limbs and stuff from a five-acre area, it might not matter much whether it's a developer or a resident at that scale, if they're burning that much wood, you might just require, um, in nine, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, that's gonna be a developer, not a resident.
If I may, councilor, you finished?
Yes.
Okay, if I may, I wanna, first off, since I, I, I started and stirred up this pot, I, I wanna say I appreciate what you've done, Wendy, and I appreciate what the planning board has done, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad we've, 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 we've come this far, uh, to some sort of resolution, and I like everything that you're talking about, I have no problems with ninety-nine point nine percent of it. Uh, I agree, we've got, current councilor, I agree with you, I think we need to, um, be able to, um, delineate the difference between commercial and, and residential. My only problem, cutting right to the chase, is the five acres. Um, that's a lot, and a lot of trees, you can have one or two trees on a five-acre lot you're clearing with underbrush, but you can have a, I'm looking at the amount of burning, you can have another lot that's just chock full of trees, and that's a lot of smoke, an awful lot of smoke, is there some way that we can, I, I, I just don't like the five acre, Donald. I, I like everything else, I don't have any problem with it, but I'd like to have everybody discuss the five acres, that's pretty big, that's pretty big. I think the council, the councilor just alluded to that, so go ahead.
I would just, I would just, I, I, I'm not, uh, uh, the, the developer is, is not gonna build one house. A developer's gonna build two plus houses, so it doesn't matter if it's on five acres or, or, or a half acre. If a developer is going to build a house, he's gonna be able to build more than one house. So I'm not sure what, what the acreage has to do with it. If a homeowner wants to clear their land, and, and if they've got, they've got a lot, and they want to clear it, that's one house. But, but a developer's coming in, I mean, I haven't seen a developer build one house on, on a large, large plot of land, which is where this come from, all this clearing that they're, that they're doing. It's not, it's not just one, you know, somebody building one house. Um, you know, the air curtain thing, I mean, I, I think you ought to, if, if we, if we proceed with this, I think we ought to give them a, you know, option, you want to mulch it, you want to haul it off like that, or you want to burn it, I mean, you know, I, we don't care. Um, we're just concerned about the citizens and all the soot that, that, that has been around town for, for the development part, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I don't know that there's a, a magic acreage number, but I do know, I do know developers are gonna build more than one house, two or more.
When, when we have a small subdivision ordinance, what, what is the, is there a certain number for that?
Four lots or less.
Four lots or less.
Is considered a minor.
Could we?
Could you say that louder, please, I, I didn't catch.
Four, four lots or less is considered a minor subdivision per our ordinance.
So could we?
One thing I would like to remind you of, though, is the decision's not really being made tonight, this was just brought to you for your information.
This was just brought to you for your information. And when the actual U D O update, all those changes come to you, this will be outlined in there. And that would be the time that you would be able to discuss, make changes, and tell me exactly what to put in it.
Okay, I have one other thing. It was brought up that we would exclude farms. Farms, can we do that?
Yes, that, that was another suggestion that the planning board had made was to exclude farms within the town limits from that ordinance.
Yeah, there's actually a state statute that requires that bona fide farm operations to be excluded from land use regulations. This is probably one of those, but that's, that's sort of a, it's on the, right on the borderline in terms of whether that would be applicable or not. But it, I, that doesn't mean that you can't do it. It just means that if it is a land use regulation, you would have to exclude bona fide farms.
Since we're going to consider this down the line, just to give Council a, some food, some food for thought, if you will. And I mentioned this to Wendy and I think she presented this to the, to the planning board the other night. When we talk about smoke, we need to look at what is, what is smoke? Smoke isn't just smoke, it's particulate matter. And smoke generally consists of particulate matter that measures 2.5, is it micrometers? A micrometer, micrometers? Yeah, 2.5. Keep that in mind because the human hair is 35 times bigger than that and it's 70 micrometers, okay? So when you breathe in that smoke and you just get in your lungs and you cough a little bit, that's, you know, and you walk away and you go, that's fine. But there are folks out there who just can't walk away from it because it does get in the house. It can go through a mask. And when it gets in there, it travels through the body. It attaches to the, to the blood cells and it, it travels all through the body and it's cumulative. So if you're, you're consistently involved in something like that with a lot of burning, it, it's going to add up. So we just can't say throw a mask on and walk away. That can really, really hurt you, especially if you're already ill. And that's all I have, thank you. But once again, thanks for bringing this up and we've, we've moved this thing forward, I like that. We're getting closer to the line.
Okay. Any more comments, Wendy? This, okay?
Uh, just a couple of questions. So what we're saying is, we don't, we want to make this acreage smaller. Is that what's, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, it's, we were just discussing that because what the planning board had suggested was five. And it's going to be brought to us from them, so we'll have.
And, okay, now my question, of course, there are some people that go out here, not really a developer, buys seven acres and is going to, uh, build one house on it. Well, that, you know, is that person going to be subject to the ban?
If they start burning?
Think, I think with that, if, if I, if, you go out and buy seven acres, I don't think the most, the person that's going to build a, one house is, 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 is going to want to clear all lot.
Well, but you don't know that.
No, no, you're right, you don't know.
Um, I mean, I, I, I'm questionable on the five acres. I'm like y'all, I'm questionable on the five acres. But when you say five acres and it's only going to be a developer, that's not true. Because some people are going to buy five acres so that they can have privacy. So, you know, are we going to exclude, make it just developers or are we going to include everybody?
Well, I, I'm like, just to echo what Ms. Oldham said, it's, you'll have a chance to fine tune it a little bit more later. But I'm, I don't think it matters really if somebody's burning five acres worth of, of woody debris. It's going to be the same problem as whether it's from a developer or a residence.
Even if they only do one acre, they're still going to be subject because we've got seven acres. Is that not true?
That's true.
Yeah, that's, well, that's going to be where it's going to be, like I said, you have to be very specific because it's going to be the cleared, the amount of area that was cleared, which is going to be a bit subjective, but.
I like the suggestion, I'm not against it, but I'm just trying to make sure that we do it the right way.
And this is one reason that Wendy has been trying to talk with the attorney and our planning consultant. Because when we put it in the U D O, we want to be sure that we cover the burning for the big developers, but we don't penalize the homeowners and the people that are trying to just do their own burning of their own property. And so this is, the wording has got to be very precise so that we don't leave somebody out or include somebody that doesn't need to be included. So, um, I just hope that y'all work it out. So when y'all bring it to us, we're going to be right. Okay. Does anybody, any of the Council have any comments?
On that?
On anything?
Yes, ma'am, I do. This is, this, uh, I, I know you think when you see that I have comments that you sit back and you go, here he goes again. Well, you're true, you're right, here I go again. Um, and this is not easy for me to do, by the way. But I'm going to do it anyway because it needs to be done and you can say, well, it's just the old man talking again. You know, they say, there's an old saying that with age comes wisdom, and I'll add to that, with age comes experience. And, and being an army brat and then being in the military myself, I've lived all over the United States and, and two foreign countries for that matter, and I've met a lot of people. Most people were very, very nice, except for the ones who tried their best to kill me every day for a year. They weren't nice, but they had their thing. In any event, there's all kinds of people and you have to trust a lot of people. And I think I need to tell you that my trust has been eroded lately. The next remarks, if you don't know what I'm talking about, that's fine because you're not involved. Doesn't concern you. If you were involved, then you'll understand what I'm trying to say here. And this is very, very important to me and it's, it's not fun, it's not fun to say. So, uh, please, please take note. Um, hold on a second, I've got some notes here. Let me, let me just say that my trust has been eroded lately, as I've already stated. And let me just say this. To whomever it matters, I know what you did. I was taught a long time ago, don't accuse unless you have hard, cold facts and evidence. And I don't have that. But I have an overwhelming amount of circumstantial evidence. And I have to go, I just can't sit this in the back of my mind and walk away and say, I'm, I'm better than that. No, it needs to come out and I, I have to say this. So anyway, I know what you did. And I know when you did it. I know how you did it. And I know why you did it. And I know who did it. So it's out, that's fine, I feel better. And to those that did do it, do not put 007 behind your name because you're not that sharp. None of us are. Okay, let me move off to the second thing. I feel better that it's out. And I'm not a dummy, I'm not, I'm not stupid, so there you have it. Second thing is, this is January. Come this time next year, I'm going to be sitting out there with you folks. And that's a promise, I'll be sitting there. Um, the election cycle starts in July. The election window is very brief, it opens in July and it closes in July. So you don't have a whole lot of time, but if you know anybody that would have any kind of interest in sitting up here and taking my place or some other places, but I'll guarantee you mine is here to be taken. Um, please get in touch with them, have them come out, sit, learn, find out what's happening. There's a learning curve involved here and, uh, and, and we'd love to have some people come out. So I'm just trying to give you a heads up, you got till July to find somebody. There may be two seats open, there may be three seats. We need people up here, we need people who understand and who care about this town and where it's going. I'm not from this town, I'm not from this town. I, I was born up north. But that doesn't make me a bad person, doesn't make me a stupid person, but, and I'm not saying I've had my fill. I don't want to be sitting up here in my eighties, which is what I would be doing with one more four-year term. We've all seen what happens with politicians in their eighties. So I will leave it at that and I say thank you very much and let's find somebody to sit up here. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
I've got, I've, I've got a couple of questions and some concerns. First of all, I know we're getting ready to do a budget process. The, the one, the most things I hear from people in Wilson Mills is how much their evaluation of their property has gone way up. So we are going to have to look at what that relates to, to our taxes. I mean, I'm, I've, I've talked about and talked with the Johnston County, some of the Johnston County people down there. And, you know, if we, if we tax people like we're taxing right now and their taxes and their, their value of their, their houses is going up double what it was, that's going to, I, I would like to see sometime pretty soon, something that tells us what's that going to relate to how much taxes we are going to pay here if we keep the same rate? And what's that going to do to the budget process? And I think that's a very important question.
You're going to have to go with a budget neutral, a, a revenue neutral budget, you, you can't. We just went 11 cent up on your people. And with the revaluation, if you don't do a neutral budget for, for what we're at now, then there's no sense of us even being a town because we're stealing from your people.
I agree, that's what I'm trying to say.
A revenue neutral budget is the only thing we can do with that.
Do we have, do we have any idea when the county commissioners are going to make their decision?
Been told by some people that deal with the county that what they'll do is that when, they'll figure out what their budget is going to have to be. And then once they figure out what their budget is going to have to be, then they're going to be putting the tax rate for the county based upon what that budget is going to be, which normally would mean in this situation, they would drop the tax rate.
Right.
So I'm saying the same thing for us. If, if we're going to have to figure out what our tax is, our tax base is going to have to be. And then we're going to have to adjust because again, it's going to be a lot more money if we don't adjust. And I, I agree totally with you, with you, Randy. It's going to have to be a tax neutral thing, but I do think we need to start thinking about it now.
Well, we're going to have to start our budget sessions very shortly and that's one of the things that Leanna and I had talked about, that we're going to need to look at what our revenues projected to be so that we can have, know what we need to do and not do for the coming year. And we're going to have to look at anything, everything very seriously.
So we are looking at that, right, Leanna?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
We are looking.
Leanna, are we going, are we going to couple the budget meetings with our work sessions? Is that possible?
No, it's not possible this year. Um, I know that you used the work sessions last year as your budget sessions, but with the business that you've got, every month that the work sessions and the regular meetings, you're going to have to have separate budget sessions. And that was Monday night, we were going to discuss some dates for February. I don't know if you have your calendars tonight, but with a couple of ones not here, I didn't want to move forward with a time or a date. So we can schedule something in February if you want. I can email everybody and find out what your available dates are and call a, call this first special meeting as a budget session. I'll do whichever you'd rather do, but we do need to get them started. I will tell you though, to, to answer your question about the, um, how it's going to affect our revenue, we're going to continue to get in scrolls from the county as we do every year, but they're going to fluctuate more this year than they ever have just because there are so many appeals on the revaluation and some of them are legitimate and some of them are being adjusted. So as we get those scrolls in and we figure our tax base on that, we may have the next budget session and our tax base changes because we've gotten a new scroll based on somebody's appeal. So just know that throughout the, the budget planning session, it's going to fluctuate. We're going to, we're going to take what we get from the county and figure it just like we do every year.
Do we have to have the meetings here or can we hold them at Town Hall?
They are public meetings, so we need to have it in a place where we would have space available for any public that might want to attend. We don't really have anywhere at Town Hall to do that.
The conference room at, around the table and seating chairs for anybody that comes in?
If we had people come in, I'm afraid that would probably not, it wouldn't be. I mean, if we had people that wanted to attend the budget sessions because it is a public meeting.
I know, but.
I mean, the school is fine with us meeting here.
When was the last time we had anybody come in?
I don't know.
Besides me, before I was elected.
Might be different this year with the reval. I mean, is there any reason why you wouldn't want to meet here like we normally do? Or the school is, is very generous about letting us meet here until we get our new schedule.
Yeah, I just didn't want to go overboard with that on the school. I think it would just be a lot more comfortable over there is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. So, any, anyone else have any comments?
Do you want to, which would you rather me do? Would you rather me just email some dates?
Yeah, just mail some dates to us. And it will depend on those that are working because y'all have to check your schedule, so.
What, what days, um, like late afternoon weekdays work better for everybody, just so I can come up with some dates? Or I know it's yours all over the place, okay?
Um, normally, I prefer Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, anytime, basically after 3:00. But I can work, I can go back at 3:00 and be fine. And there are days I can do before 3:00, but, you know.
Is there a day that's better for you? I was.
I would just, I would just say we can do it at the same time as our work session. I'm, I'm just saying I can be available earlier. I, I prefer the, the 5:00 person.
Negative, okay. Uh, we're, we're open our second public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to Council? Please come forward, state your name, your address, limit your comments to three minutes. Public forum is closed at 8:01.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilman Trippit, seconded by Councilman Jernigan to adjourn, all in favor? All opposed? Please come home.